Okay, welcome everybody to the work session of Tuesday, March 19, 2019. I'm going to start off with a landmark presentation by our town historian extraordinaire, Gray Lee. Welcome, Gray.
Okay, welcome. Thank you very much. Uh, tonight we're recommendation recommending for landmark designation, what we call the Herman and Pauline Seabreck Lorenz House. It's 175 Bedford Road, just a little beyond Bravort. It's it's downgraded, so all you really see from Bedford Road is its tile roof. Um, but it has sort of four claims to fame for landmark designation. One is a very handsome example of Tudor Revival architecture, which was popular here in the first decades of the 20th century essentially. Uh, this house was built about 1913. The second claim claim to fame is it has a famous local architect, Alfred Basell. Alfred Basell designed the first Chappaqua Library, the one that's now the the community center, the little Gothic Revival building there. Um, he also designed a building that's not as well-known by and large, which is the second Quaker Meeting House in town of Newcastle, the Croton Valley Meeting House up in the Stanwood area. Lovely little arts and crafts building that was built about 1903, when the original Meeting House had to be vacated because the reservoir was raised and flooded it out. He also built his own house, uh, opposite old, in old, what is now Old House Lane, because it's where the Clintons now live. Also, he's important to the town because he was one of a small group of architects who really founded the planning board and set up the first zoning ordinances here. They established the way the town is laid out for all practical purposes, and we've kept more or less to that ever since.
So Gray, let me just know, they actually, he designed the Clinton House, not just, not just the house on Old House Lane, he actually designed the Clinton House?
He designed the house where the Clintons now live, that was his personal house. He was married to a hate, and it was hate property. You won't go into that too much. Then they hired a local builder, um, and his name was Sid Quinby. Uh, Quinby's go back a long way here. Uh, and he's best known for the builder and developer of Ridgewood Terrace, uh, where he also lived, but he built houses all over town. But the most important thing is that was Mrs. Lorenz was Pauline Seabreck. And William Seabreck, her father, was a very successful nurseryman and florist. Uh, came actually from a very successful family, a German family that came here, very successful as florist and nurseryman. Uh, and he bought a former farm that extended from almost to King Street and to Orchard Ridge. That and that he set up at least part of his nursery business there, and it's called Seabreck Nurseries. Uh, there was already a house there, and that one you do see, on the left hand as you go out, a building with a round tower. Uh, former planning board chair Earl Henley lived there for many years. Uh, anyway, the the house was actually built when the Seabrecks bought it, they moved right in. Had a big war, housewarming party a few months later. Uh, it was a very big business, probably one of the biggest in its time before the re- as I just came along. And it was kept alive by William Seabreck, who founded, and his son George succeeded him. And the family settled around him. Uh, and in 1912, uh, the daughter bought this property of about one and a half, one and a half acres across, directly across the street. And they had this house built, and they lived there for some 25 years. Uh, so on these grounds, we heartily recommend this building be designated as a Newcastle landmark. Are there any questions?
Can I just say hello? I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would like to, this is the current owner.
That's my house. It's gorgeous.
Very nice.
I'm a caretaker right now.
Mary Anna Caton, uh, who's been there thirty years.
Thirty-five.
Longer than anybody else.
Wow.
And.
It's now for sale, unfortunately.
But it's 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 a wonderful house, it's going to be on the house tour this year, uh, Historical Society House Tour. As will be a barn across the street, Victorian barn, which was there when the Seabrecks bought the place, and they used it as part of their business. But now has been much modernized and is very elegantly decorated. May 16, Thursday, save the date.
Uh, the, one of the things about this property is, um, the very beautiful plantings, um, there, when, it was one of the things I loved about it when we moved in was, um, rhododendron, azaleas. Uh, there's a copper beach right sort of at the left front corner that you can't see. I mean, if if you were looking from the house across the driveway, as there are some copper beaches across Bedford Road, the same hundred-year-old copper beaches, which are just incredible. And, um, we've done a lot of gardening around the front of adding magnolias and dogwood and, but the the planting, when we moved in, the former owner who only lived there for eight years and I think was, um, you know, not not doing much with the house at all, he said, don't cut anything down because everything blooms. And everything does bloom in the spring. And there are, you know, sixty-foot-high vibrambs, and it's just,
wow.
it's it's a willy, and then they're little, the whole north, there's a north yard behind this part of the house. This is facing, uh, west. This this is the front of the house, it's, it doesn't face Bedford Road, perpendicular to the road. But in the north yard, the whole yard is covered with, um, uh, violets in the spring. I mean, it looks like someone just painted this huge yard, and it's just covered with purple violets. And there are things like this all around, it's 1.7 acres, and it's just an extraordinary, um, we've we've just lived in it sort of as ordinary people. We didn't do what we could have done in terms of, you could have had a full-time gardener and blah blah.
Yeah.
More than maybe you need to know, but the inside is absolutely spectacular. I wish I brought, I should have brought one of those brochures from, it is, as I say, we we have to move. My husband is very ill, and so, so we have to move. But, um, it's it's all authentic inside with lots of woodwork and, um, three fireplaces and six bedrooms. I don't need to do a sales pitch here, but it's a, it's it's a very historically, inside is authentic, um, including all the bathrooms, which of course some people don't like, who are looking back at Dubai, but never mind. Beautiful tile work and very claw foot tubs and, you know, just.
It's a very, a very elegant house.
It's a very elegant house.
It it also has a built-in greenhouse in one corner on the main floor and a solarium. They also, it's a horticultural house.
Yeah.
It is big time gardening, and that's what, and and her husband was also a a nurseryman. He was a colleague of of the Seabrecks. But this is a relic of that era when that part of Bedford was very much developed as a high, high-end landscape and business. There's a big greenhouses and very big plantings and old trees, which are still mainly there. Okay, anything else?
We should require a tour next time.
Yeah.
For what?
We should require a tour next time, go on site.
May 16.
I'm putting it on my calendar.
I think it's the 17th.
No, it's the 16th.
Sixty, Thursday, May 16.
Thursday, May 16? Oh, I thought it was Saturday, the 17th.
No, no, no.
The 17th is Friday, so that would really mess with anybody.
They're always on Thursday, Thursday.
Oh, boy, I'm glad.
No, we're going to be straight out.
Whoa.
We're in for a big shock.
Anybody, you're welcome to call me and say, can I, can I look through the house? Because it's 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 a beautiful house, but you can't do it on the 16th.
No, anybody can come on the 16th, just.
That's right.
I found some pictures online.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
That's gorgeous, totally cool.
Oh yeah, I guess it's for sale, so you can see inside.
You know, the pictures that they give are quite spectacular, actually.
Hey, somebody want to make a motion?
I can't find it, can you send us the one?
Yes, um, so, uh, well, since we're all here, how about a motion to, um, accept 175 Bedford Road as a Newcastle landmark?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And good evening.
Wow, we're looking at pictures, it's so nice, it's gorgeous. Lots of good luck.
Sure.
Sure.
I could kill all.
No, you would not.
Oh, no, okay, I, whatever the opposite of a green thumb is, it's what I am. It's okay, I'm good at so many things, but that's not what I'm.
There's a living room, that's a living room.
Wow.
There's marbles.
There's an angle note, which is.
There's a solarium.
Oh, that's what we're looking at now, so nice. Complete with a drain, I saw that.
Yes, because it was really, it watered.
The green, the greenhouse is heated and and the the roof rolls up.
There's the dining room.
I mean, it's.
So pretty. There's the kitchen, which is very much in the, it's still in the, but it's pantry and kitchen.
Spotted in your country.
Yep.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
That's the.
Wait, why did I?
You went to real estate?
We did like it in there a little bit, we cleaned everything.
It's beautiful.
Upstairs bedroom.
Gorgeous, the floors.
Bath.
So cool, that's so cool, I love it.
I like the green toilet, look at that.
Upstairs bedroom used for study.
That's my, that's my study. It has a a porch off the study.
Bath.
Oh, wow, look at the tile, all the original subway tile.
I'll be very low on closet space.
Or they made bathrooms so large back in those days.
There's six bedrooms. One of them, there's, it's the maid's quarters, is there's a back stairs up from the kitchen, up to the little bathroom and a little bedroom. Anyway.
It's gorgeous.
Enough of a sales pitch.
Lots of good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Gray.
As always.
All right, um, I've got the recommission outside.
One last two seconds.
Oh, I know where that house is. Okay, I'm done. I remember seeing that somewhere.
That's the, that's how standard they get Bedford Board.
We'll move down, part cozy group.
Taking the dice. I'll take all your good locations, be like, no.
What's up, guys? You guys missed the landmark presentation, it was actually pretty good.
We were just talking about how ashamed we were for not coming in for that.
Tried to build it up. It didn't work.
Were you filming? Did you need a crowd? We could have done that, I'm like sand park.
Are we taping?
Are we taping?
We probably still are.
We're taping. Yes, we are.
Terrific, that's great.
That's why I was crazy.
Public record forever.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Ike, applaud your your four nothing, that's fabulous.
I threw that together for you.
I'm so impressed.
It actually took me longer for my computer to warm up.
More than one font, the centering from the top half of the agenda below is a little off.
And this is why I love the part of the minutes, when we review the minutes at every mission.
Inappropriate cap slot, I'd say. It's a lot, lots of issues.
Inappropriate use of centering. Inappropriate use of centering.
Although number four is phrasing the term of a question, so we're okay in the form of your question.
That was, that was one of my recommendations, he has no idea what I'm talking about.
Okay, we should move along.
All right, so we, you want, we'll give you an update on the playground, the basketball court?
Yeah, okay, so we actually have, um, on the agenda later this evening for the town board's consideration, is actually a revision of the, um, it's a request for a change order. It's a revision, um, of the RFP. Basically, um, this playground basketball court combination went from being, I would say, five hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, to well over a million with every whistle and bell that we put in. Um, and so in an effort to sort of pare the project back down so that it, it fits within our financial abilities, um, because we very much want to do a basketball court and a playground, um, we've asked, uh, the engineer to go back and, uh, sort of pare the, pare it down so that we have an alternative when we go out to bid. Um, it will, um, it will push the release of the RFP, um, back for another month or so, but we still believe that we can make, we can stay on target to be able to break ground on this, actually proceed. Um, as of, um, I believe September 1 is what we're looking at. Our problem is, is that the area that's back there is actually our spoils yard for the infrastructure project.
Right.
Um, so we eliminated parking as it is, and so our ability to actually do construction back there before the, we're out of it, you know, out of the spoils yard, that's been cleaned up, the ELP has left, is really minimal. So we're sort of in a time crunch. And I, um, I know that there was some disappointment, and I completely understand it, and and I, I get it with the fact that when we're done, it'll be basically on the cusp of winter. But this is not a project just for this year, this is a project for, you know, next several decades. So it's something that the community is going to be able to enjoy going forward. Um, wish the timing was a little bit better on everything, believe me, but it is what it is, but we're really close.
And considering how long we've wanted the basketball court, it takes you, no, it's another couple of months.
Well, I I would agree, and I'm, I'm happy with the report that, you know, you got a date in mind, and I know it's subject to, you know, that happening, but at least, you know, there's that proverbial light.
Right.
At the end of the tunnel, and it's, you know, it's not a train coming the other way, as far as we can tell.
And we're expecting, you know, if it turns out that they're asking us for 90 days to be able to complete this project, we're still, okay, we'll be able to finish it before, you know, the, you know, try to, you know, winter cuddle where we can get, you know, blacktop or something like that anyway.
Um, so this is now my seventh year on the recommission, seventh and last, um.
Thank you.
Like you.
And and this was.
And he changed that rule, right?
Yeah, well, this was, this was on our agenda when I joined, so at least to hear about date certain and that it's going to happen. Um, and John, who's been involved with the recommission even longer than I have, it's, uh, it's tremendous. So we appreciate that you've continued to push it and appreciate you working with us on it. And I think it'll be really great, so it's really tremendous.
Stu Berg, who was on the commission, I overlapped with him my first term, you know Stu. I don't know if anybody else is familiar with Stu, you might know. He was one of the first guys who came in here, and he said the only reason he joined the commission, and we're talking now, 20 years ago, was to, was to, was to push that. You know, we work at the same firm, so I keep him updated, and he's very excited. And I told him we're going to nickname, we're going to rename the whole thing the Berg.
Yeah, I have documents from like literally, I think, 15, 20 years ago.
Oh, completely.
I've been phoning to me.
Absolutely.
They were trying to put it for, for years, um, behind the, the, um, uh, the community center. And that ground is so spongy, which if if anybody at the school district would have asked me whether or not they could, you know, it was spongy back there, I could have told them, it's really spongy back there. They won't be able to put in what they want to put in.
Right, that one plan, then we did a plan to put it behind Getney, and the, you know, it required a lot of clearing and rock blowing up and all that other stuff, and, yeah.
Joe, what does the alternative look like? Like, what kind of variations are you looking at?
Um, so, um, the, the, there is no alternate, there is no variation to the basketball court and the playground itself. It had to do with, um, for example, uh, the plan that was, you know, brushing up a million and change, talked about regrading the back parking lot with the installation of a level basketball court. You know, picky, 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 like the basketball court should be level. So an alternative would be to install a small retaining wall around the basketball court to keep it level, and then not have to take and rework the entire parking lot. The reworking of the parking lot is like $300,000 plus. So being able to eliminate that from the project is a big deal.
I do prefer to park on level ground.
You're going to have to.
I leave my car in neutral when I park.
Take a little fun out of it, yeah, yeah. Um, no parking brakes, just let it go.
Just let it go, just live by the seat of my pants.
Okay, um, and so, um, they were looking, I I don't believe that there was, um, any significant changes to the playground at all. Um, you know, we had been putting, we had been toying with the idea of putting in sidewalks, um, significant lighting around the place, um. There was just an awful lot of whistles and bells, and because it's a lump sum project, we got a little spoiled. Let me back up for a moment. Our infrastructure project, $14 million plus, that is a line item project. So that when it came in higher than what we expected, we were able to take a look at line items and just pull them out. Because this is a much smaller project, it's actually a lump sum project. So if we're pulling things out, we need to pull them out ahead of time and get bids, as opposed to waiting for the bids to come back in and then saying, well, what happens if we shave off A and B? That's not the way they come in, and the bids don't, the bid results don't, don't lend themselves to that.
Interesting.
So.
But it is principally the everything else.
Yes.
Meaning not basketball court, not playground, that you're throttling up and throttling down with the two alternatives.
Right, so things like they were going to do extensive plantings, we're still going to do plantings, but we have a tree back for that, and we can do it in-house. You know, we wanted to, you know, be able to increase some buffering around it, you know, make it pretty and stuff like that. We have the ability to do that, we don't need to go after bid on that sort of stuff, we don't need to include in the contract.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, um, and I do have to tell you, and we'll see how it all works out. The conduits for the, um, lighted basketball courts are going in. I have asked for the lights to go in as a separate item, they are $70,000 item. We may not get a chance to put them in this year, but they, we we are preparing to be able to put them in. And depending upon where the bids go, if that's what prevents us from being able to go forward, we'll have to pull them, you know, we won't install the lights this year, it'll be next year. But at least all the conduits will be there and we'll be ready to install them.
Forreski.
Not to jump over the master plan, that was something you guys wanted to talk about, but I did, I did want to talk about number three only because it ties into this. So when you talk about, like, the conduits and and one day getting lights, with his friends in Newcastle Wreckin' Parks, I mean, we've, we've always tried to solicit donations for things, and actually the town can actively get donations, so I know Jeremy looked into creating a 501(c)(3). It's actually very difficult, it took two years for the friends at Chappaquahawright Center to finally get it. So Ike over here told us about something that Westchester County has, where basically you use their 501(c)(3), because all towns have this, this issue, they get a small fee for it. And then, uh, so another, the bottom line is we have a vehicle and we can accept donations and possibly get those lights. So it ties into that, but.
Or the question is, is there any money in there yet?
Well, not yet, we, we don't have it in place.
We don't have it completely in place because it still requires us to have a body that acts for.
As that.
As a body here, we need a board, right, to to work that way, so, and I'm not a hundred percent, you know, we find it hard to believe, sometimes when you get to legal stuff, I get a little careful about these things. I don't, I don't understand how we create a freestanding board to just, you know, be a board to do this. Uh, so, you know, I don't know if that's going to be something that's turned to you guys, and, you know, we'll talk about it the next Westchester County Bar Association Drinks thing.
Maybe like they have the farmer's market, that's like a separate board, they're not a town, they're not a town board.
No, they're not completely independent.
But, but they're, but, but are they an organization? They're, they're.
Yes.
Right, so there still has to be some form of organization that's acting as a thing that that then taps into it.
Right.
So that's.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm unfortunately really aware of.
Right, so that's, that's the hurdle that I was having trouble getting over.
Yeah, you're not the only one.
Okay. Good, good to know we're all confused together.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I, I do know that council is actively working on it, because.
Okay.
Reminding Nick of it, I keep saying to him, we need to come back to this.
Well, maybe not actively working on it.
No, no, they is actively working, well.
Working, working.
I got the act.
Having skipped over Master Plan, I said, we dropped that to the end anyway. Because I think it's a, it's a, it's a wrap-up point, actually, or encompasses a lot. Okay, so now for, in phrasing the form of a question, camp, motion of.
Well, that was.
What is?
What is?
I mean, basically, I, I put that on there, and, you know, obviously, you know, besides Newsletter Blast and things like that, and I know at one point you guys were, you know, we would solicit sponsors for events. You know, we would ask the local camps if they want to sponsor Kiwi and Mohawk and whatever, Briesmont. And, you know, that's competition for the town camp. So, you know, I, I think we should think about you guys sponsoring some events. And even though it's the same money, the town money, it's, you're spending money to make money, you know, I mean, you, by you sponsoring some events, you'll get more kids, more parents to sign their kids up for town camp. Especially with, we have a lot of different camps nowadays and a lot of different programs, so it's a great way to promote it, and the camps actually make money. So we should look at it as a, as something that we, we promote to try to make more money.
For an event you're specifically thinking of?
Well, no, but there's a lot of events that we have, you know, we have, well, festival, we didn't do it last year because of the weather, but, you know, there's different events that we have, the summer concerts, um, there's different, you know, there's a lot of different events that we have that we, sponsors for. We just had something two weeks ago at Performing Arts Center with, you know.
It's certainly some, uh, a good idea, I didn't know we, something we could do. So I, I think it's something we'll certainly put in our, in our, on our radar as, as we move forward.
Well, if you have, I mean, if you have a budget for the camp, you could, I would assume you could set aside some money for, I mean, maybe not this year, because the budget's already planned, but going forward, you could set aside some money to sponsor some events. It doesn't have to be just town events, by the way, it could be any, it could be other towns. It could be, you know, the goal is, well, not really so much other towns, I guess, but you got it, you just, the goal is to promote the camp because it's a profit-making thing, and people love it, so you might as well promote it.
Well, so, I mean, there, there is some money in the, in the boards and commissions line that they could use, depending upon, you know, how much you're talking about.
Uh, when does camp enrollment start? When does it close?
It's started. Yeah, it's open now.
And when does it close?
Well, we, we keep it open almost right up to the week before camp, um, you know.
Discount closes.
It's just the discount closes.
Yeah, right, we, we do an early bird discount, that closes in May, I don't remember when this is, it's either first or second week in May, and then after that, it's an extra additional $100 to register. So, um, but we're right on track.
Yeah, well, actually, there, there's some, there's like at least one really nice add-on this year with the after.
Yeah. Except.
I, I, why don't you elaborate on. To tell whoever about the aftercare.
Right, so one of the things, really the big thing for, for this year is we added an extended day option for, for day camp. So, uh, we think that'll be, uh, we're hoping it'll be popular, we think it will be. We've already had some pretty good registration with it. So we'll allow, we're not doing it before camp, just after camp, uh, till 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, the school has helped, uh, keep the building open, so we have.
That was actually one of the key, um, things when we, when we negotiated with the school to be able to offer the program, so that was, that was really.
They actually asked us to be in there till 6:30, you know, by the time everybody gets out, and then, you know, be done, so. Yeah, we're pretty excited about that.
That's great.
Think it'll be big this year, we're hoping it will be anyway.
Just from Chappago Moms, I know there's a lot of people that are always looking for babysitters that can pick their kids up from camp and hang out with them for two hours a day. There's definitely the need for it.
And with being here, you know, at Bell this year, and probably next year, we're usually in a two-year cycle at each of the schools with camp, like each of the, yeah, each of the schools with camp. It's right, it's convenient, you know, we'll be right here in town, so.
Are we highlighting in the newsletter the extended day option?
Uh-huh. I had it in there last week, and we had a special blast for camp, uh, for the, um, and we should also do a special blast for when we get near the, um, end of the discount, you know, like a week before.
Right, yeah, we usually do, we'll, we'll set up a couple of these blasts.
But just, it wasn't with the town, they, it was like, the new, not. But just wasn't with the town, they, it was like, not just your blast, but the E newsletter.
Right.
You know, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and these kind of things, as, as you're, he's feeling them out now, you know, we, it can grow depending on how many people you get in there, I mean, you know, you have to have you maintain the ratios of, of staff to kids, so, so groups you can, if you can, you can expand to fit the space as long as you have.
Absolutely.
The numbers that make, it's sensible to have the, hire the next, the next.
We're kinda operating the same way that we operate our, our regular camp, we go kind of with a bare minimum numbers as far as hiring staff and then once we hit that threshold, we wait till we get it, you know, so right now our threshold is thirty-four kids for after school. Cause we're, we're looking at a one, two, one camp, one counselor to eight campers, so we'll have four staff right now, four to five staff. And then we'll wait for, you know, if we hit another eight to ten kids on the waiting list, we'll take those kids at another staff, you know, so it just, you know, financially it makes sense and it helps us control how many kids are coming in and really makes sense what we need for staff, so. Think it'll be, uh, it'll be pretty good, plus we restructured our add-on activities for camp this year, which were a big hit last year, so.
We could do, we could do a lot of blasts, you know, with different, highlight different camps, the travel camp, the, uh,
Right.
whatever the different ones are, we could do a special blast for the.
And, and we should try different sides on the electronic sign as well as opposed to just the, the one camp registration, maybe you wanna do the, the add-ons or the special programs or anything else that you're doing.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the after camp will do something specific for that.
Yeah.
So.
Let people know about, wouldn't know what it look.
Yeah, our add-on activities have already filled up.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
See, I'm, I'm thinking, Rob, as, as you were mentioning, you know, promoting the camp, it's something I think we talked about a couple of years ago, where, where, where we should do a better job and we haven't in, in the couple of years branding it. You know, um, um, you know, everyone's got.
Oh, actually like name it.
Yeah.
Like a logo or something.
And a, and a logo or something like that and, and I think that's something that we have to, to revive, I think we kinda lost it when Anna, we lost Anna.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, we started working out with Anna and then it, like right at the end of her.
Her tenure fizzled, it fizzled.
So.
If you get, you could, listen, you could also get like a high school student, get like an intern or something and help, help them like social media.
Yeah.
Chapagomoms, I mean, you got twelve thousand people there.
Oh, I know.
They're not all Chapagomoms, but so.
Yeah, we actually have a summer internship, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be starting too late, though.
We have one.
Again, it's, but that, again, it's the kind of thing for years to come, not just necessarily this year, which is already, eh, eh, already in the, in the hopper.
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely.
You're in all the elementary newsletters, I assume, already.
Probably not.
That blank stare should probably be something.
I don't know, I'm talking about.
All of the, all of the elementary schools have weekly, have weekly newsletters, like what, they have a town, like a town activity.
Yeah, I don't think we're.
No, we might be, because I know they used to have, you know, you could sign up, like the basketball camp was in there, there were.
Yeah.
Cause, cause I've never, I, I haven't spoken to anybody over there about it, so unless they're just pulling information that we send out.
Just through the PTA, you can get it.
But I could send you the email.
But it would be a great, that would be a great place to talk about the extended hours.
It's a lot easier than having to go to the school.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Particularly about, right.
That's a very, that's a good idea, we should definitely do that, I can send you the email, you can just send it to me and I'll forward it to them. But definitely the schools, I mean, we've put a lot of stuff in the schools and the newsletter and they do put stuff in their, uh, newsletters as well.
Like maybe you can just email everyone, just let us know where enrollment is, you know, at the end of this week, just next week.
Just camp in general?
Just camp in general, I mean, how many people have signed up for, you know, regular camp and aftercare and just give us an idea of where we're at.
Yeah.
I mean, the camp is, it make money off it, and people love it, so it's a good win.
Yeah, so let's, let's do that now. You know, tackle what we need to do.
I like your contact.
Yeah, it's, it's just the PTA.
Contact, okay, okay, all right, Amsterdam?
So, um. One, one other thing, I, some of these things, I mean, just, when you send a newsletter, I know I asked you this a couple of times, I know you don't do it, but when you guys do the blasts, a lot of the blasts, I, I think it's just a setting on constant contact, but like a lot of the blasts, you could have a link that says, you know, view in web browser. And if, if that link is in that blast, then you could just take that link and post it on Chapagomoms or something, you know, it's, your, your, the constant contact one for some reason doesn't have that link that says view in browser. So sometimes I'll ask, you know, I'll send like Brittany an email and say, hey, can you send me the link? And she does. But if there's a way to get that link in every blast, then it's probably just a contact, a constant contact setting.
Yeah.
And then you click on it and then you view it in the browser and you just copy and paste the, the link and boom, put it in Chapagomoms. The graphic comes up, it's easy. But I don't, you know, I don't know how you do that, I'm sure it's a setter.
Amsterdam? Amsterdam?
Amsterdam, um, one of the things that we have been talking about as, as a commission is, we have a great facility down in Amsterdam, you know, and putting aside, you know, the fields getting chewed up and everything, we have a nice building, what's that?
No, as you see, we, it just came up at the department meeting the other day.
Oh, okay.
About Amsterdam, so that's why I was just, just laughing.
Is it the same conversation?
Yes.
Yep.
They have a nice building.
With a nice building, I mean, we know it's a scenic location, it would be a nice place that if we can develop it for our own uses, we could do camps there, we could do other things there.
And a scenic location.
We have a, you know, we have a terrific facility, I mean, that's, it's not gonna be cheap and it's not gonna be tomorrow. But it's something on a, on a long-term basis that we think is, would behoove us to, to, to make better use of than have a building that's being used for storage.
So it is our cold storage, it is the nicest cold storage.
Cold storage facility.
I believe in North America.
I think you're probably correct.
It is, it's unbelievable.
So, I mean, I mean, it's, I, I have nothing more to say with it, this is what we'd like to do, you know, and what we're thinking about is a, is a long-term project for us. And that's why I said the master plan comes after, cause we're talking about a few long-term projects here, that's just something that we, we want to throw out and something we're, we're looking at because as Jill said, it's, it's the nicest cold storage place you're gonna find and it's a shame that it's the nicest cold storage, that it's being used for cold storage.
Chapagom crossing has so much basement space, I think it'd probably give us two seconds if we want to store stuff there.
Right. So, um, that's it, and I guess anything else?
That's, that's, that's interesting.
No, I would, I would love to have that facility to use for camp and rentals and, I mean.
And again.
It, it, yeah, so it actually has the, do those garage doors all work? They open?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we, we use one of them for all our camp storage right now, so.
But it actually has like garage doors on the front of it.
Yeah, and upstairs would be good for offices. Well, I think structurally, structurally, no, no, not like for, for our camp staff would go up there, but, you know.
I think it has.
Office there.
Well, I know it didn't move in purpose there, I have to tell you.
I think it would be a great place for camp, be a great place for rentals, so.
Close to Rockies.
How much work has to be done to renovate the facility?
I, I wouldn't be able to give you an estimate on that.
Um, we just, just.
No, I don't have like cost, I just mean like what, what.
We have to move everything out of there.
Yeah.
Does it heat in?
Give me a mention.
Yeah, it's like.
Does it have electricity?
Does it have air conditioning?
It has electricity, it has a, um, like a fire suppression system, like a foam.
Well, the schools don't have a suppression cell.
Yeah.
So they'd, heaven forbid, you know, the records were burned, it would do it, but there, I don't know that there's water.
I don't think there's heat upstairs or.
Right, no, there's no heat.
But if you're using it in the summer, that's probably not as.
Did you got, did you got the building, basically pull things down to the studs?
Right, right, for just an HVAC system in general.
Yeah. Yes. But you didn't put in heat?
But there might be regulations around like childcare centers that.
We did, we didn't put in heat. Um, we didn't put in heat and we didn't, um, because it doesn't, you can't hold a septic system, you can't stand it.
Childcare facilities, it's a certain New York state standards.
Oh, it's a septic.
So that would be the biggest thing, we need potable water and you may need better facilities.
We have one potable water.
Uh, so what we do have, you know, I mean, there's restrooms on site of Amsterdam, there's the restrooms in between the two soccer fields.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to work on that, but I don't know like what there is, but it's, I mean, it's a terrific facility, the building is there and that's the biggest part of it.
Right.
That's the biggest part of it, right, so.
Yeah.
And after the pricing challenges with the school district over the price of the facility, we have a, we have a watermark of what
Right, yep.
we're already sinking without any equity.
That's why, that's why we're asking what's between there, yep.
Yep.
Food solvency.
Yep. Yeah, so, yes, definitely, definitely, um, something to work on.
Something to work on, yeah, I think that.
I don't think I've ever seen that building.
You got to change.
It's bad.
Something like a bathroom in between the two fields.
No.
It's a little bigger than that, it's a little bigger.
You have to go into the bathroom and you pull a lever and it spins around and then you come out the other end.
It does, and you come out the other side and it's giant.
You come, it's giant.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever actually seen that building.
Yeah, exactly, I'm sticking to that.
It's, it's got a heavy duty security system on it, it's unbelievable.
It's a single tenant, yeah. It's a beautiful building, it is a beautiful building.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
It's all the way, you go back past the soccer fields, there's a cul, there's a playground facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you, the road kinda turns and forms a cul-de-sac and it's, it's right there.
Yes.
Okay.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm gonna go check it out.
I'm, I really did want to my office, uh, attention.
Do you wanna talk about the turf fields and such, you just, you just brought that up? Yeah, well, I know it was one of the things that Rob had asked as well to, uh, to put on there.
Right. I, yeah, as, as, as a, as a whole, you know, sure, it's a great idea, um, you know, where is, is, is a, is a first question.
Well, well, one option is to turf an existing field.
Right, just turf an existing field and get that.
Upper Gedney is always, plus you, it's always thrown off, but the problem is, is that how you can, you know, it's hard to get there.
Why can't you turf, uh, rec field since it has lights already in place?
I didn't, I didn't say that, I did not say that, I didn't say that.
My, my, I hear you somewhere just like muttering at you guys.
That would be a huge, people would. That'd be like a little suicide for us, I'd hate to recommend that.
That's like sacrilege.
I mean, honestly, it's a very.
Nice knowing you.
My, my, my political career is over, so I don't mind saying it, it makes a lot of sense, but it would be, people would get very upset.
But, but why?
Why?
Because it's, uh, just, it's, uh, first, well, are you talking about also doming it or something?
No, I'm just talking about if, if you, if you had turf.
Right, you're trying to work.
I know.
That you can use with lights already there and parking already there, why wouldn't we explore that?
I, 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 I think it, I think it's something that should be considered, but I think it drew a lot of controversy.
Because of what?
Don't feel should be considered too, right?
Because of the.
The feel of it, people sitting with the concert.
Exactly, and it's on street level and you see it, and it's like.
So four concerts a year, so four nights a year.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I, this is.
No, peo- people were complaining about the concerts.
No, I, I know it's not your problem, asking like what the counterpoints are.
No, sitting and just like, it feels like you sit on grass, like it's a little parkway.
Cause it's also just, it's just open space and people, open space prefer most, I would, playing fields are great, don't get me wrong. But this is more than just a playing field, I mean, listen, if you talk about efficiency, what is it used, one percent of the time, half a percent of, take it up prime downtown. But it's open, it's open space and people like open space and I don't think they necessarily wanna see open space with turf, funny, you're looking at more of a ball field. Most people look at that as open space in our downtown, you know.
Like that's where the concerts are and there's people.
The bell field would have been great, cause that's set back and it's not so, it's open space, but it's not like part of the downtown, it's not like the feel of it, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you're looking more, you know, upper Gedney or, you know, potentially one of the Amsterdam fields, uh.
It's different.
Bell field.
Or both, if you're gonna do one, do both.
Well, there's one thing I wanted to mention, which is.
The only thing it doesn't do, of course, is it doesn't increase usage, because all three of those fields are already booked.
Well, so, Rob's, I mean, so talk about, cause your, your thinking on this is not just about the turf, it's about the dome, right?
Well, w- what, part of the reason why I wanted to mention, I know, Adam, we interviewed you, you mentioned it and it's, there's definitely, you know,
Yeah. Yeah.
it'd be great that there was a turf field someplace, but something I wanted to throw out there, and I know this is gonna sound like a pipe dream, but it's, it's really not. Lifetime Fitness would love to have tennis courts, there's no question that, you know, tennis is a huge draw in this town and people go to Stowe Mill and love fit for the tennis. So they would love to have tennis courts someplace, it's not gonna be at Chapagom crossing, so they're, they're looking for other places. And it's a, 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 an Ormac indoor type of facility would, I know for a fact would interest them. Where you'd have turf on one side and tennis courts on the other, and they would pay for it. And they look at the rental fees at Ormac Indoor, and Ormac Indoor is privately owned on a town park.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the question is, you know, where would they put something like that? And, and I don't have the answer, but that's the question, um.
I, I could actually preliminarily identify, um, an area at the back of Gedney.
Right.
Remember, um, that we threw out to them, I just, I don't know how much space they're looking at and we'd have to take a look.
Yeah.
But the place next to Rockies.
No, 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 it's not big enough.
No? It's not big enough?
And the parking is very limited.
Millwood Park.
Millwood Park.
Yeah, that would be a great place for a turf field, though.
Yeah, but I don't know if people would necessarily land this right in the road.
Small, it's only baseball.
I would love to just put a big tennis court over there.
Part of the problem with that park, anytime you add to the capability of the facility, the lack of parking is a real problem, you can barely fit cars on there when there's one event going on.
It just comes back out of sight.
You can barely.
I mean. Just, I mean, I think we're all in favor that we want to find some space.
For additional facilities, absolutely, yes.
For, for different facilities and, and additions for year-round and everything like that, which kinda leads to.
The master plan.
The master plan, see how it all comes together.
The master plan.
Well, I, I wanna, I wanna put out there that like, yes, I feel like, come in agreement that we should be looking for, for additional space for facilities potentially, but I think we also have to be mindful of being protective of parkland space for open space, people who enjoy hiking and, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's a balancing act.
Yeah.
I don't think it's just, let's go like find more space to build more facilities and build more turf fields, it's gotta be counterbalanced.
Right.
Yeah, so the, the trade-off in my mind there is that we've actually got a lot of public land that is unusable for that purpose as well, but the problem is, it's not great.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit, there's a reason no one can hike on it either, is because it's, it's not flat. So, um, we've got a lot of space in this town, but we don't have a lot of usable space for either of those purposes, right?
And it's also that.
This isn't just walking, that like.
But it's also, listen, I mean, as, as much as I'd like going to Ormac Indoor, you know, at nine o'clock on a Sunday for my daughter's soccer practice, you know, it'd be ni- it'd be nice to, uh, you know, I mean, there's a big, Ormac Indoor is literally rented every second of the day.
Right.
And even like Northern Westchester would love to have a turf field for, for rehab, they all rent now rehab centers to, you know, get people not just walking again, but back on the field. There's a huge demand for it, and I understand what you're saying, but I mean, there is definitely, uh, you know, it's something that residents would actually use and enjoy, you know.
And, and.
I think we just gotta find where.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, like when I hear you say there's a place in the back of Gedney, that makes me a little nervous, a lot of people use the back of Gedney, but it's totally, cause you won't play golf, so.
I, I, I understand, but the nice thing about the back of Gedney is that.
It is a very heavily used part.
It's a very heavily used part.
I, 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 I understand and I know that, but the nice thing about the back of Gedney is that there's already a road there and infrastructure.
But not that.
So as opposed to taking and, and, you know, in addition to building a, a, um, a field somewhere and first having to put in infrastructure and lights and access and, you know, roadway and everything else, that's also tremendously disruptive, so trying to be able to use the access that we have already, um, it is not the, is not the worst thing in the world, um.
And didn't, I mean, I think it's staying.
Well, I think it goes back to the master plan.
It does go back to the master plan.
So let's go, let's, let's go back, cause it's like, everybody can have a pipe dream of what it is that they personally would have on their agenda, which all comes with a price tag.
No, we talked about the master plan, I think.
There's a lot of people with a lot of competing interest for what they would like to have seen done, and I think that the things that are gonna make, you know, in the next, let's call it ten to fifteen years, the most immediate impact of the quality of life should be what the focus should be on.
Let me, let me just.
It's also factor, I'd rather than.
This is, this is wolf way out of date.
Before, before we go there, I, I do wanna say one more thing.
Exactly.
Keep in mind, we have Lifetime Fitness, they're a publicly traded company, they have tons of money. Just keep it in the back of your minds, if a spot comes up for a facility, it's not a question of funding, it's a question of where to put it. Because again, they want tennis courts and we want a turf field, and they looked at the Ormac Indoor turf rental fees and they find them very attractive.
Do we have a plan for the righty property?
That's not big enough.
Good question.
But I'll say one more thing, when you talk about space, when you talk about underutilized space, that's not being owned, I mean, the rec field, yes, it's used maybe one,
That was a good question.
We don't.
But the wagon road camp, now that's privately owned, that's literally used six weeks of the year. Now, again, it's privately owned, but that's.
I think it's used more than six weeks of the year. Yeah, but they're, they're outdoor, as a, as a, as a camp camp, they, they actually run for, it's, it's actually well utilized, not the outdoor parts of it, but they're, they're in the remote, stuff like that.
Maybe. Not too much more. Oh, so maybe I did think.
It's not, it's not rented, Children's Youth Society runs parks all year long.
But there's still a huge piece of property that, you know, it just sits vacant, I mean, we use the ball, we use the baseball field, you know, that's about it.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of potential in that piece of property, in my opinion, especially for a charitable organization that's looking to raise money. It's a ton of plans.
So where are we on the master plan then?
We want one.
That's a fabulous idea, that, that is the first step, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Right, and, and, and it is, it is the first step to everything, because, you know, we, we can talk about these things and, and we were just saying, it, it puts things in perspective and, and what's, prioritizes it for us and, and where things should go and, and
So there's money for studies.
And, and things were missing, you know, but, you know, we're, we're just throwing out the basic ideas that we've had and, and where we'd like to see things go, but the master plans would, would put this in perspective at this point. We've made a request from, who's, for the, for the funds, for the twin outs, uh, twin outs.
Oh. So.
You know, with their, with, cause they earmarked, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so, uh, we requested, we wrote to Twin Oaks requesting a charitable donation to pay for a master plan for the Parks Department. Parks and Recs Department, and they're gonna take it up at the board, so hopefully they will say.
That'd be, that'd be great.
You know, and then that would, then give us, you know.
Yes. That, that is literally the first steps in moving forward.
Exactly, so we can talk about domes, turfs, outdoor space, trails, everything, you know, by, by doing it right, there's, you know, things we don't know about in this room.
That's great.
Right.
Yes.
But they, they do, but so, we're trying to find a partner to help subsidize, so if they say no, maybe we'll call up Lifetime Fitness.
But that's.
I don't know if they would.
I don't know, I don't. Wait a minute, I just wanna, I just wanna bring something up, Mike and Jill can follow up with you, we did put money in the budget for studying, so to a certain extent, there. to a certain extent, there is money there and it might help you with Twin Oaks if you knew that there was actual skin in the game on our end, that we weren't just looking for a handout.
Okay.
Yeah.
What?
Do you guys have you um have you received any ideas as to what a a master plan would cost from other communities?
What?
I know we put money in.
So. The other places I've been able to reach actually have done some recently, don't re- really mirror our size, they're a little bit bigger, but
Mm-hmm.
um they've been in the eighty to a hundred thousand dollar range, so.
And what was, what, give me a new municipality.
Uh Ithaca, Saratoga, um there's another one out in the middle of Newark, I can't draw a blank on the name of the town.
And and I guess by comparison, the last master plan that was done was finished in two thousand seven, so it probably started in two thousand five, two thousand six. That one cost, I think it was thirty thousand dollars.
That sounds right to me, I I'm surprised it's that recent, I thought it was older than that.
It's not worth it.
I thought so.
And Scarsdale just budgeted.
When you read it, it feels older than that.
That's right.
Scarsdale just budgeted for their master plan, they put a hundred thousand dollars in for the department wide master plan for the rec department and then an additional forty thousand for for the swim facilities more specifically.
The swim.
You know, us with Twin Oaks, you know, we've requested money for the the basketball court and for Chaplain Performing Arts Center, and they have a lot of money left, don't get me wrong, there's enough money to go around for everybody, but
Yeah. Yes.
the point is that, you know, it might it might benefit us to, you know, go in together, because maybe, for example, they're not interested in doing the master, maybe they wanna see something tangible, I'm not saying they do, but let's just say they wanna see something tangible. Um, like I know for the Performing Arts Center, they weren't so interested in programming, they more interested in capital improvements, so they may wanna see something tangible.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So in that, if that's the case, then we could just say, okay, give us more money for the playground and the basketball court, and then we could take money from that for that, so it's it's all it's all money is fun- uh Jeremy likes to say it's spongy.
Right.
Well, I think one's a capital, I think one's.
One's a capital improvement and one is not, you can't necessarily do that, but I do think the idea of going in together
It's spongy.
I I I agree.
is a good idea, and I think that you have, I mean, I fully support the idea of a master plan, I mean, we have the comp plan now, some of the stated goals
I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
And to wrap that up with an actual.
That's actually one of the stated goals, so yes.
Yeah, I mean.
And to turn that into a master plan for Parks and Recreation.
What what specifically is, or maybe not specifically, what is in the budget that relates to the master plan?
Um, so there were um, there are two fifty thousand dollar budget lines, I believe, for town board studies. Um, and that was to enable us to follow through on the goals identified in the in the master plan, and a lot of them involve studies to be able to move forward. Um, and so um the master plan uh for recreation is actually one of those identified goals, so this, you know, would be an appropriate um use of the money, it's just that we, right now, we haven't budgeted enough, but I would speak to Rob Deary about whether or not we could take and carry over the funds or at least some portion of it.
Yeah.
Or even, you know, for the survey for the, you know, comp plan, which we've never spent any money on it, that's been rolling over.
You do special.
So now we're done, it's our surveys.
Yeah, but that we expect that gave that money to the company, right?
Do what?
There was a survey.
What's?
Right.
Yeah, but.
They almost we take that money to the survey company, it's not a very planned.
So we didn't.
Can we pay a gap?
What is, yeah, what's what's the mechanism to request a master plan for the town, like?
Under F M O.
And then you guys put out RFP or request it?
Well, we have to, so the the key is is that we actually have to create an RFP.
Right.
Okay, who who does that?
So it would be you.
Well.
I ideally, you would you would play a big role in that.
You copy, you get it from another town, you copy it.
Right. Okay.
And you 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 take a little bit of that Saratoga and and Scarsdale.
That's what we almost do all the time.
And you take the best parts of them and you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You get like three or four, you take a piece of it, so your kid doesn't look like a caveman.
But if you take a look at the ma- the overall master plan as it relates to Parks and Recreation.
Well, I've looked, the comp plan, yes.
We identified a few things in the comp plan that we thought that this would deal with, or couldn't round out them off, but we looked at it.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, it was part of the, and then and I do have, I did print out the uh master plans from both Saratoga and Ithaca, just to, as far as language goes and.
Is it the RFPs or the actual master plans?
Boom, well, I got the RFP from Ithaca, not from Saratoga.
Okay. Okay, and what about Scarsdale, maybe we can get there, only cause the size is a bit.
Yeah, I can talk to Brian over there and get.
And I, and the swim facilities separately at forty thousand bucks?
In Scarsdale.
And what was, why was that separate and why was that?
Because they have already have pool facilities, so we're trying to figure out how they go.
And their and their pool facility, it's a large facility and, you know, it's their golden, it's, you know, it's their golden age over there, so they're doing a separate study on that, from what I understand. I can't speak for Brian, but just conversations that happen.
Last would be, just to move on, and it's a long, like, what you you guys were saying about, you know, we we can work together on this, that would be really facilitated if we actually had a liaison with the town board that, you know, we could work with, you know, more than just name home.
Jeremy's really a song.
Is Jeremy a liaison?
Yes, we know, so and I'd hate to speak ill of someone who's not here, but he's been to a meeting and.
Ouch.
We'll beat him up.
Thank you, that's all I ask.
If not, we'll find you someone else.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's not like we have that many options, I mean, it's just.
We're not telling us, can I have every, and we're scanning the back row.
I'll do it, all right, rock paper scissors, ready? I'll do it, yeah, guys.
Do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
I love that, just see whether or not that might be, you know, an option for you going forward.
Right.
Jill, I have to leave at ten o'clock because, you know, I have that early start date and I didn't realize, I looked at the agenda, I didn't think it would be quite this.
Okay, yes.
It looked like a pretty terse agenda, but it's not, so is there anything on, I I we should finish with this, but if there's anything to prioritize between now and ten o'clock.
You're living it. Well, wait one second, gentlemen, anything else, otherwise we'll.
No, no, what's what the wrap up by saying, you know, we we're in a good position, we think, we've always, we've replaced, you know, outgoing people with good people, both in terms of the commission and in terms of of our employees. As you can see, all all our all our assistant superintendents seem to graduate to superintendent roles in other towns, uh you know, which is which is a good thing.
Okay, you're the right one.
So what are we leaving off, you guys are gonna start working on the RFP, um we could work together with Twin Oaks
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
and uh what else did we decide as far as?
Yeah. We we did send.
Yeah, we say come on, the liaison, I don't say it as well as you do, it's a, you get like a nice French twist there.
Uh, we're we're gonna, yeah.
It's that liaison.
I think I was hungry when I hear you say that, but uh.
We call it the croissant, you know, it's a croissant.
Your liaison will be bringing croissants next time, yeah.
And by the way, before we go, Rob, on behalf of the commission, we'd like to thank you for your work, and I think this will probably be our last meeting with with you since your political career is coming to an end. As you said, um and we thank you for the support you've given us, the help you've given us, and uh we we hope you continue to wo- work with us, you know, for years to come, even though you're not, you have to be in that chair.
Don't count on it, don't count on it. We could take nine more months.
All right.
Thank you, thank you all.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, let's see, we're gonna get here, um. Um.
Thank you.
Fine.
Does it all? That's all good.
That's horrible, yeah. Okay, um, let's see, um, um, Paula, why don't you just go to. Okay, you know what, there are a couple of items that we were gonna do on the um executive session, but we can shift over to um.
Paula, maybe you wanna do it?
Sure. Yeah, maybe we'll wanna talk about the parking one, um.
She's there for that. She's trying to get off the door.
I know, she wants to prioritize.
Well, no, I want to prioritize things that she thinks that are important, I mean, some of the stuff, you know, I'm I'm happy to accept a retirement.
So. Yeah, I I think. No, 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 so so um, right, so we have a revised proposal for engineering services uh services on the Tersia Brook Bridge, are you familiar with this?
You know what I mean?
So what, right, so um what what we ended up with was.
Lauren, do we have the new one in here?
You did have the new one, now I saw it.
I saw it.
It was colored.
The, wait, sorry, the entry.
This one?
You have the colored one, yes, you have the multicolored one, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so um. Ah, terrific, thank you, so um we had um two engineering firms who responded to us. Um, there was a question as to whether or not the lowest bidder actually understood and was capable of.
Right.
I just because of the discrepancy, that's what I was asking about.
For, no, 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 because of the discrepancy, it was a great question, um Bob actually obtained um clarification on what they were offering, um he felt that five hundred and twenty hours was overkill. Five hundred and twenty hours was overkill, so it's the executive session, that's actually.
No, just switch it.
Um, but he felt that the lowest responsible bidder was more than um adequately qualified to do the job, and um, you know, sometimes the first person you deal with thinks that they're the only person that you're dealing with and, you know, we we did notice that they keep coming down, but there's still a forty thousand dollar differential between the two.
Yeah.
And he would recommend that we go with the lowest responsible bidder, and I really would like to get this project done.
Yeah.
I I. No, 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 I didn't, you were absolutely right to ask the question and um but yeah, if there's any any other questions on it, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I think they're written, we get to move on with this. Okay, that's great, um we we will have a resolution a little bit later, um we had a um um a requisition for uh request for a waiver of a tax penalty, um someone was actually um appointed as a temporary guardian for a resident, so all the paperwork is in order, so he was actually appointed in February uh tw- February twenty second of twenty nineteen, so after the tax bill was done on January thirty first. So this is the paperwork that we're usually looking for looking for when somebody's requesting a waiver, and it's a condition that it's a circumstance that we can grant it. So whether it be um an executor of an estate or a guardian, this, you know, once we receive paperwork like this, the board is within their rights to take a waiver, so I would ask the board to waive that, let's see. Um, okay, great, um you wanna talk about the reserve park?
Uh.
Or do you wanna go into the change orders, I'll make a choice, we can probably do.
Say that again, what was the question?
Sorry, I'm talking faster cause I'm trying to get you out, there um there was a request for reserved parking at the train station for pregnant.
I have no problem with that.
Well, it's a legal issue whether.
I feel the challenge is.
There's a, there's a, yeah, there's an email, I I think we can get you there if there's a real need for it.
I don't I don't know how many spaces we're talking about.
But it's not even that, it's just the legality of whether we could do it.
I don't know, I just think.
That's a real question about legality, but I think we could we could definitely finesse something if there was a real, that's the key, I can't.
I mean.
We think that if we were challenged. Yes, that it might.
I suppose.
And I don't think anybody would challenge it.
Parking for pregnancies.
No.
Oh, what we what we're saying about that?
Some folks might, because if you're if you're in another class of folks who feels like you need easier access.
What, handicap park?
Not handicap, but some folks, you know, would say, well, it's also hard to have three kids.
I have anxiety, it stresses me to have to walk.
It's also hard.
Oh, so far.
It's also hard to be a senior citizen and, you know, it's it's a.
That's what that handicap parking is for.
Well, not every senior citizen is handicapped.
And I was gonna say, and exactly, I was I was over there dead, but we could put them together.
And 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 you could also, the the argument that that Ed's um colleagues put together, I mean, you could also, if you are having severe difficulties as a pregnant woman, you can get a handicap, a temporary handicap from your voucher.
Handicap.
Right. For the doctors, no, that's not, that's not a hard thing to get.
So.
Could be, it could be, this, an an organization on behalf of uh American Disabilities Act that basically sees this like uh
Yeah, that's true.
you know, almost encroaching on their uh their jurisdiction and it maybe it it almost, it almost waters down
So.
And then arguably.
what they're doing if if they're gonna start giving, you know, treatment to other groups.
Well, and then you may arguably get other people who are offended who say being pregnant is not as disability and I and I don't want that too.
Was it clear on the potential scope of this, were we just talking about the train station or a bigger area?
Just train station, yeah.
Yeah, that's what that was requested.
Okay.
I gotta say, when I was writing, I would never have said that.
And the thing is, it's tough, when you're walking all the way over there, all the way in here and here. No, seven months pregnant, exercise is encouraged when you're pregnant.
Carrying the weight.
Do those spots tend to fill up or are we typically at three months?
Um.
Which spots?
They they fill up, but I, you know, we actually have more.
Which ones?
Sp- I mean, we the we handicap, there there are stringent rules about where you're supposed to place them, and you you're not supposed to, you know, you ideally
Uh, handicap.
Uh-huh.
you you don't um require people to pass over lane of traffic, so they tend to be adjacent to the train tracks, so you don't have to cross, but we wouldn't have to do this.
What's, what's the story with those three parking spots that are, you can't park here until after nine thirty?
So we have staggered parking because a lot of people were on um uh like a late start, and so they complained that because of that, they their offices
That's the electric one.
several, is it ten years ago already, they used to, there there was this push that because there was so much congestion that they asked people to go in a little bit later, a little bit earlier, and so there were people that that didn't go in to work until ten o'clock, and so there was a a an accommodation to them for people that go in later that we would reserve a couple of spots for those people, um.
Yeah, that seems crazy to me.
That's it, it seems crazy to reserve spots for those people, but not reserve them for pregnant people, I mean, if we're gonna.
Right, and by the way, the nine thirty spots.
I, those those are able-bodied people who just got a couple of hours asleep.
The.
Or tremendous volume contention, yeah.
The nine, the nine thirty spots also, even if you wanna talk about the times, I mean, the trains are nine twenty three and nine forty six, so you can't park there for the nine twenty three train and then
Right.
They are by the nine forty six.
and you can't really put a nine twenty six.
They are both by nine thirty one, I mean, they're.
No, I know, people sit in it.
They would always sit in those spots.
No, I know.
Um, so we wouldn't have to be beholden to the same stringent rules that handicap parking um has within the New York State Code, we could we could just have close spots as opposed to, you know, we could make some of the the couple of the spots that are by the fifteen minute parking you know, by, you know, right at the end over there, you know, it could be that area, they don't have to be the ones that are right next to the train station, they could just be close.
It could be also good if we put them near, well, it would be near Chaplain Station, but the truth, the reality is also, it doesn't have to be just for commuters, it could be for people who are wanna go for lunch at Chaplain Station and have and parking close, but.
Well, we do have those spots.
Yeah, I don't know though.
That's true, right, but.
Yeah, and I think they would be a little bit frustrated if they felt like they were losing pride.
We have the spots for Chaplain Station.
Well, not to take away their spots. Well, not to take away their spots, that wasn't what I mean, put it put it near there so it gets a dual purpose, if you don't have a commuter.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah. I think right over by those nine thirty spots actually would be, but.
Wait, we're for this?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say for the um.
No, I mean, we're just talking.
Are we thinking of permitting that?
I don't, I'm not for this, I I just, I just think there are so many people who, I know it's not politically correct to somehow to not be for this, but there are so many people who have, I think, issues where they're gonna say, well, I need extra, I wanna see be close too, and frankly you can get up early and get a spot close, like people go into work, whether you're pregnant or not, if you if you're making an early train, you will get a good spot that's close, I just think that you're gonna have people who say, I have anxiety, I have this, I have that, I can't walk so far, and and you're right, if you're pregnant and having such a bad time, you can get a temporary handicap pass.
Well, I think I I obviously I just, I I sort of, I like the idea, I think it's nice, you know.
That's my idea.
So.
But that's uh, you know, I think it's a nice message.
And then what about dads who say, I'm staying home because my wife is pregnant and I need to take care of her in the morning, so I shouldn't have to walk so far?
Too bad, dad.
No, but that's discriminatory.
A nice try, my response is nice try.
I would say man up, man up.
That's discriminatory.
Yeah, nice try.
Right, but that the reason. But then the line applies to both both genders, like.
Yes, so so the 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 arguments that Lisa's making is exactly the arguments that Ed's colleagues found, and that's that meant that it may not stand up if somebody were to make a challenge to it, on the other hand, we could do it and then see if, see what the, see if somebody does challenge it.
I, the only way I would do it too, I would not designate additional spots, I would take some of those spots that we have reserved for compact cars or in the front row or the nine thirty spots and do those, I would not I already hear people complaining constantly why there are so many spots reserved for the hybrid cars and for everything else, and it discriminates if they can't afford a hybrid car and.
Well, some some hybrid cars are not as clean as.
And, yeah, and some are not really clean to begin with, so.
Well, no, no, you don't get passed for those.
You don't get a plant, you don't get a pass for every.
You don't get a pass. You don't get a pass for a hybrid, it's gotta be on the list.
Oh, I love it.
Oh. So I've I've heard so many people complaining, and when this came up on, I think it came up on some, it was Sun Chaplain Moms or something, I don't know, I got a lot of people calling me saying
Have you real?
to designate additional spots is just really not fair for people who may never use them too.
What if you just pushed out some information initially that essentially said, are you pregnant, are you having issues mobile in getting around? Did you know that you can get temporary handicap spot, it's easy, here's what you do.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great idea.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
The public service in this one.
That's a good idea.
Okay, good, done.
Okay, next one, Jill. Um, the change order for Barton and Judas, so this is for the um the basketball court and playground, so we had a conversation um with Leah who's helping us out and Leah Jones and we asked her to take a look at the proposal to see if there was a way that she could make it a more bare bones proposal, just the basketball court and the playground. Let's just bake it, break it down into its basic components to try to get the calls to the project manager's role, you know, we have grants that cu- that cover a significant portion of both projects, but not for all the extraneous things that we had asked for, so um she took a look at it um initially and said, you know what, it does look like there's going to be some significant um savings, she then came up with a twelve thousand five hundred dollar change fee. And I said to Bob, I need to know what significant means, because if you're talking twenty thousand dollars, it doesn't pay. So her email for today talked about the fact that. So, her email for today talked about the fact that um she was looking at a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars and then a quick another hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then the possibility of yet another hundred thousand dollars. So if you're talking about a reduction of four hundred thousand dollars, I think the twelve five is a wise investment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I appreciated the fact that she, you know, she was able to put this in my inbox. Now again, these are just the 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 engineers' cost estimates, and I caution you.
Yes.
That it doesn't mean that when we actually get the estimates back, that you're going to see these cost savings.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But.
And you, we think that the changes they're gonna potentially make are ones that we can live with.
So.
Cause it's one thing to say, we're gonna save you a hundred thousand, we're gonna get a half court basketball court.
No, 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 so.
You know what, you know what I mean, right?
Right, and and that's what the, that's what the recognition was concerned with, like, what have you done to the project now?
Right. Right.
You know, there's, there's like a hoop in the corner and, you know, you're fine. So, she, literally, she was taking and regrading the entire parking lot. We don't need to regrade it. So she talked about the fact that, you know, she would just add a small retaining wall around the basketball court and that would address the height difference.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Well, sometimes those retaining walls are pretty pricey, so I wanted to see, are we really saving significant money? Because if we're not, let's look someplace else.
Right.
We had also talked about um uh sidewalks going from, extending from the the side of the rec field that would go all around. They would snake around the basketball court, they would snake around the the um the playground to give a walking path.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that we can afford to do that.
Was it sidewalks? I always thought that was just like a, a rubber patch.
Yeah, could we do a get past path, yeah, it's a path that's bad.
Yeah, um, so the problem ends up being ADA compliance. And so we end up with making, making, yeah, making sure that somebody can get into it.
Flowing.
A man.
I mean, the la, the last thing she talked about, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Nothing.
Yeah. The, the other thing that she talked about was using mulch for the playground instead of the cushy stuff. But the problem with mulch is that a wheelchair can't pass it, so I don't know that that last hundred thousand dollars is really.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
doable. Um.
And then you have to keep replacing that too.
Yeah, but I.
More than the cushy stuff. It's still cheap, we we grind it, yeah, I mean.
Cheap, but.
But we're gonna have complaints with people getting.
Right, so, uh, you know, three hundred thousand dollars is still worthwhile saving if we can do it.
Light bearers, so.
But we've got mulch in Gavine, right?
Right.
You do?
Yeah.
And the, oh, yeah.
And they do complain about that all the time.
Okay, no, I. I, I don't, I mean.
I, I mean, I think part of the, I, I don't remember, but like, it wasn't part of the mission to make this way somewhat more accessible.
Yes, playground, which is, which is why we were going for the um either pouring place or the the tiles kind of, if, if to cushion it, so.
For them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Right. Yeah, right, right.
Um, and, and the, the problem with that is that that actually goes in before the equipment goes in, so it's not like we could say, well, it's too much this year, next year, we'll come back with a pouring place.
Right, right, right.
Mm.
We can't make that accommodation. The other things we can add, and even the lights we can add, the conduits are gonna go in, that we're including.
Mm-hmm.
But this way, if it takes us a year or two, you know, be able to afford the seventy thousand dollars of lights for the basketball court, then it'll be next year. It's, you know, it's something that we can live with.
It still does seem like a lot of money to do the work, it doesn't seem like.
It's all new drawings and stuff like that, I, and that's why I asked for the direction.
Well, shit, I mean, look, just take a look at what it cost us to change the elevation of the pipe without the stick.
Mm-hmm.
And that's an engineering drawing, I mean, I know this is not as complicated a project, but it's multiple sheets and multiple engineer staff, it's tight.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so we would be looking for the approval of this tonight as well.
And I'm sorry, I was a little bit confused on how you presented this to the um Parks Commission folks. Um, are you thinking then that you would both release both versions of the RFP? Or only the version that would have, if you had some results to prepare?
Oh, you, so, we would, we would ask, no, no, so what we would do is, we would ask for um um alternatives, alternative one, alternative two. Because we don't, we don't have the option of taking out line items the way we did on this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I get that, so, it's a single RFP with two options.
Yes, and actually, it probably hasn't.
That, with it, so they'll bid, they'll buy the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they.
Copple is allowed, not from what I'm watching too, and then the town board will make that.
One of those too.
Yes, right, yeah. Right, and actually, I think there's a, a third option for the front parking lot, because I do wanna hang that price on it.
Oh.
And we'll see drawings.
Yes. Draws, yes, that's the other thing, there's the drawings, so.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thanks, next.
Two weeks.
Um, okay, so we have um a couple of change orders, I think four of them in total from ELQ.
Did we get a revised?
I have it for you, I've got a lot of things.
Uh, sort of consolidated snapshot of.
Yeah, I, I have a couple things to.
Financial stuff?
Yeah, we, we have to go into executive session to share some of the stuff with you, but.
Then we, we could do it next week.
Okay.
You have it, or you could email it, that would be fine.
That's fine, I'm happy to. Before you go, I will hand everything out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, the first change order, oh, what was it? Fifteen wasn't the change, first change order, I think.
Uh, I have it in the back.
Yeah, yeah, while you're at it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, the, the first um change order is for number fifteen, is decorative light poles. So, as you go up the um the one twenty bridge, we actually had a different type of, I'm sorry, it's, it's like, it's very.
Some kind.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, yeah.
I guess, like, yeah. Um, we had two different types of lights there. We had two very, very tall lights.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that were pretty costly. And what we did was we swapped them out for the decorative lamp posts that were um on the street.
Mm-hmm.
So, we asked for two additional, um, I'm sorry, so maybe it's four. Um, we removed two of the very tall uh decorative lamp posts and we replaced them with um with two decorative lamps on either side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they were, um, that, that cost was significantly less and also it was a typical.
So this is a savings, this is not.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a savings, but then we added another two because we just felt that if somebody hit one of our decorative lamp posts, that, you know, a car accident, that we wanted to have just two on, on hand. So, we, at the end of the day, it's thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, but um, yeah, we, we were able to.
For two lamp posts?
No, for six.
Six forty. Right, but we're. But we're saving money because we took out of the.
The, the two.
So the net is.
The two very large ones. I, I believe that the net ends up being. Is the net thirty-six or thirty-eight?
Yeah, he said it was a nineteen thousand dollar savings and then in total would be thirty-six.
Right, thirty-six in total, he took out the two nineteen thousand dollar ones.
Right.
The, the ones for ninety-five each. So there were two that were ninety-five each that went up. We instead put in um two for sixty-one five a piece.
Plus labor.
Plus two, yeah. So the foundations.
And is there actually a cost savings?
Well, two are.
It would if we stuck to two rather than four.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm sorry, this change order, we're gonna pay thirty-six thousand dollars.
For additional lamp posts, yes.
But it doesn't seem to make sense, because if you're paying nineteen, nine thousand dollars each or ninety-five hundred dollars each, that's a savings of nineteen thousand.
Right.
The other ones were six thousand dollars each, if you buy fours, it's ninety-five thousand, and the net change is fifty-five.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, yeah, I, I, I apologize.
It doesn't make sense to me.
So, the two decorative ones replace the two large ones. So, um, instead of ninety-five a piece, we stuck with the sixty-one fifty, okay? And we didn't even get into the cost for the foundations, 'cause they're all, they're, that's a wash, they're all the same, you still would've needed foundations. We then extended sidewalks down here, so we have another two decorative lamp posts that came for these lightings. At least, we have two extras.
Oh, and two extras, so it's six, got it.
Yeah, but this is actually.
Why does it say eight?
Because we increased the number. So maybe it's another four down here. All I know is that we.
Somebody's not right on this, I feel like.
Did we get any for uh lo- lower uh North Greeley?
We, we have, no, we're not putting any at North Greeley.
My end is there.
We're putting, as we extended the sidewalk here, we have four.
We're laying conduit on North Greeley?
No, we didn't do conduit in North Greeley, I didn't think we should.
But didn't we want the really tall light posts?
Over here.
Oh, no, not the posts, not the tall poles, light poles.
No. No, no, so we, we have our decorative light poles, they're, they're significantly tall.
Yeah.
I apologize. So there were two that were going up North Greeley, um, up over the King Street Bridge. We replaced two for those. We have two extra that we just held on to.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have four that we are adding conduit um for the additional sidewalk that we put in along here.
So we're adding four more.
So it's a total of ten? No.
It's eight.
Two.
We're replacing two.
Replacing two, two extra, and we add four.
Adding four, two or.
Two extra and adding four.
Four, sorry.
But we're replacing two and subtracting two.
Right.
Which is the nineteen.
The, the four that are gonna be here are gonna be very visible in the.
Which is.
And so the foundation are for the four brand-new lights.
Yes.
That weren't in the contract.
Because of the foundation for the others are already in the base contest.
Correct. How did we not have lights up here?
Because we didn't have sidewalk, we took the sidewalks out. So we put the sidewalks back in, but we needed to add the lights.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Listen, it's a fourteen, fourteen million dollar project, you know, the lights are gonna be nice, the lights are gonna be nice, it's.
Yeah, no, 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 but. It's just.
Well, that's what happened when they had six, it's six hundred thousand dollars in dirty soil.
No, no, we.
And we added three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, and uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sidewalks.
Okay.
Is it the most recent version of the props, but you.
I have it. Three thousand.
I'm sorry, the blue means we, we've approved it. And the white, and the, like, the blue shading means it's already been approved, or it's already been received.
No, you know, it's funny, I, I, maybe at the beginning, but everything that's on here is stuff that we have, well, let's see, um, that we approved. Twelve and thirteen, we've approved already, we just approved them last week, you should have shared them.
Boswell's still not in here.
No, 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 I know Boswell's not in here, I need to talk to the board about Boswell, I can't put something in that we haven't approved.
I know, but the whole idea was to have a conversation.
I, I, I had a conversation.
Okay.
And I'm happy to share it with you, I just have to share it with you in executive session. I thought we were gonna have executive session, you know, before we started, but I just, I'm not.
Yikes.
Mm-hmm.
Good to have at least, I, I, there's still numbers missing, which I think hampers us from having a full picture, but. I think this is definitely worthwhile conversation.
Oh, in executive session, again, again.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know.
Completely, totally.
Okay.
Okay. Um, slowly but surely, um, we're getting in these, not insignificant, but smaller change orders um from ELQ. Uh, there's a redesign of the Shell gas station, had to do with drainage that came in at nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. There was a repair of a pipe on Upper King for thirty-four, and additional quali- um quantity overrun for some water service at two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And these are gonna be change orders sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Have they already performed the work?
Yes, the, the work has been done.
And so in essence, we approved the work already because they performed it.
Right, and it was done, so.
And why did we have them redesigned by the Shell gas station?
That they ran into conduit problems there.
Right.
All the underground conduit, so a lot of the drainage had to be taken and redesigned, and we just wanted them to get it done, so.
Yeah.
Um.
So what's the, just, I, I know I'm getting a teeny bit off subject, but not really, what's the total cost that we spent on the, for the soil?
Soil, it's just under eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, and then we also spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars by restoring sidewalks, like North, North Greeley, two seventy, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken.
Um. Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that's, yeah, so this is two seventy, and then you've got change order of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we're expecting another one of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
So that's eight hundred thousand per soil, and basically we put back in the sidewalks, which is two seventy.
It's like one point one million, yeah.
So, the, yeah, but you, you know, my point is though that unfortunately, you know, the soil is, is horrible that we had to deal with it, but we didn't have a choice. And we voluntarily put back in the sidewalks. But this, this other stuff, these are normal contingencies, I mean, that's what happens, I mean, it's, it's, it's unfortunate we had to eat a thousand dollars in the soil,
No, 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 I, yeah, it's.
but I mean, these are the type of contingencies that come up.
Okay, so, um, I think that's probably about it for this, um. We can, I, I'd like to just talk to you guys in executive session just for five minutes, just so Hava can hear.
Okay.
So maybe we'll just break two seconds for executive.
Okay.
So I moved to enter into executive session for purposes of.
Contract.
Contracts.
Contracts and potential litigation.
Right.
Advice of counsel.
Advice of counsel.
And advice of counsel.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Can I get a second?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, welcome back, everybody, work session.
Yeah.
Tuesday, March thirteenth. All right, so we can do the small cell thing, or just, uh, we can, you, we'll talk about it real quick, or.
It's up to you, how long does it?
It's good, it's good fifteen.
It's, I mean, can you talk in, can you talk in, like, in open session about it, can you talk in?
Twenty minutes. We'll talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
So then why don't we just put them for the town board meeting, and we'll all talk about it.
We'd really appreciate that.
Let's do it that way, okay?
Yeah.
Terrific.
So we're just gonna do the resolutions? Or is there anything else?
Yeah, we can do it.
I think we talked about everything else, right?
Right, okay.
Revised policy of estate charges.
Um, yeah, do you guys have any additional questions on the revised? Okay, fine, then we'll just put them on.
No.
Okay, great. All right, we're gonna do um resolutions, Lauren, I'm sorry, I really wish we would come in a little more.
Oh, it's.
Eric, so let's, uh, explain.
Get a clock, this is your time, you must leave at ten.
Okay, I moved to approve payment of claims in the amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars and ten cents. Twenty eighteen expenditures totaling seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And twenty nineteen expenditures totaling four hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Listen, for the summary paycheck writing report, in detail, as your detailed reports, all dated March nineteenth, twenty nineteen. The issue can mail to each claim on Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to approve the waiver of school tax penalty in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents for property seventy-one dash nine dash one dash nine dash one twenty-three.
Second.
Well, in favor? Aye.
I moved to award the engineering services for structural improvements to the Tersha Brooks Bridge, Pine Bridge Road to the Chasing Company at In White Plains, New York for an overall cost of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for part-time inspection uh for a project ranging from uh sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars uh to eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
With an additional ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Um.
Aye.
Uh, I move to approve the additional scope and services for the revised design of the lighted basketball court, court, playground, and parking lot improvements for alum sum fee of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to Barton and Loogood Ditchy DPC in So much New York. Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following change orders for the drainage redesign. Change order number sixteen, redesigned due to a rising conflicts by the Shell gas station at the rate of nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Change order seventeen, the repair of an existing pipe on Upper King at a total cost of three thousand, six forty-four and seventy-two cents. And change order number eighteen, quantity overrun for water service that had to be rerouted in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second. Well, in favor?
Aye, aye.
Why do we do fifteen separately?
And uh I move to approve the overrun change order for the additional decorative light bulbs
Oh, because it was, it was on first.
and foundations adjacent to Town Hall and the north and south sides of Quaker Street and the bridge, right? In the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Any else?
Uh, that's good, I think, right?
Okay, second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.